Shalom. I want to start off by saying Kal Ha'elav Yom La, Yahweh, BaShem, Yahushai, BaShem, Rikha, Kodesh. Double honors to the elders and apostles of great Milton for teaching us this truth. And who will? Peace and citations unto the akim that is spread around the four corners of the earth. Spreading this word is a serenade to the truth. Shalom to the hopeful elect. I'm the brother Quotatzab Zion coming back through the spirit and power of Yahweh BaShem Yahushai with another lesson, with another video, and Lord willing, this video is edifying. So I was just going through my scriptures, going through the Bible, going through my Bible apps. And I started to read Psalms 10. And immediately when I was reading Psalms 10, the first verse, second verse, third verse, fifth verse, you know, then a couple of scriptures popped into my mind, a couple of precepts, you know? So, Lord willing, I'm gonna go through the spirit with this video and see where the spirit leads. So, let me go to Psalms 10. There's gonna be a reading of Psalms 10 according through the spirit. So this is Psalms 10, verse 1. Why standest thou afar off, O Yahweh, BaShem Yahushai? Why hidetest thou thyself in times of trouble? So, the first thing that popped in my mind was the book of Habakkuk. Because Habakkuk also, he was complaining to the Most High, you know? Ezra also was complaining to the Most High. And then the Most High said, "Do you love my people more than I love my people?" You see? So it's just the spirit of the prophets that we complain about the wicked, that the wicked is profiting, you know? That the wicked is flourishing right now and that righteous judgments are not proceeding. You see, so that's not wickedness of yourself. If you are thinking like, "Man, why are we still in this hellhole? Man, I wanna get up out of here." You know, just like the brothers went into in the time of Lot. You know, Lot was constantly vexed with the conversation of the wicked. And in the same manner, we are constantly vexed and we want to get out of here, you know, as the scripture says. The exile captive. He hasn't hastened to be loosed. This is Isaiah 51, verse 14. The captive exile. And who's the exile? We are the exiles. You know, the Israelites, the so-called blacks, Latinos, and Native Americans were exiled out of our land because we were not keeping the ways of Yahweh BaShem Yahushai. Because we went off, because we went a-hoaring after other gods, you know? Just like the scripture says in Baruch. We didn't go into captivity because of anything else, but because of we went a-hoaring to other gods, you know? That's the reason why we went into captivity. So this is Isaiah 51, verse 14. The captive exile. So we are exiled out of our land for not keeping the ways of the Most High and we are captive. Because what did the scripture say in Deuteronomy 28? Deuteronomy 28, it says there's gonna come a nation swift as an eagle that's gonna take you and... Let me just grab that real quick if I butcher the scripture. Let me get it here. So I didn't put anything together, so bear with me in this lesson. Deuteronomy 28. Let me see. I think it's from the 50th verse. Yep. Kal Ha'elav Yom La, Yahweh BaShem Yahushai. This is Deuteronomy 28, verse 49. Yahweh shall bring a nation against thee from far from the end of the earth as swift as an eagle flyeth. And who is that nation that has an eagle as their emblem, as their sign? Where they, all over the place that, where they go, you know, all over the earth? That's Isaias Edom, that's the so-called white man. You know, they always have that emblem of eagles everywhere that they go. You see? A nation whose tongue thou shalt not understand. Because they were speaking a language that we didn't understand because we were speaking Hebrew, you know? If I got it correct. So, verse 50. A nation of fierce countenance which shall not regard the person of the old nor show favor to the young. So that's how these people operate, man. These people, they don't regard young, they don't regard old, they don't regard, how you call it? They don't regard widows, as it says in, let's see, Habakkuk. Let's go to the book of Habakkuk 2. And this is one. Whichever other one also, this is Habakkuk 2, verse 8. Because thou hast spoiled many nations, all the remnant of the people shall spoil thee because of man's blood and for the violence of the land, of the city, and of the city and all that dwell therein. See, so this is gonna be the result of the wrongdoings of Isaias Edom. All the nations are gonna take a parable against them, they're all gonna conspire against Isaias Edom. You know, after a while, these nations are gonna be fed up with Isaias, man. So it says, "Because thou hast spoiled many nations," meaning robbed, murdered, plundered, you know, these nations, "and all the remnant of the people shall spoil thee." That's what they're gonna do with her also, you know? They're gonna spoil her, they're gonna destroy her, they're gonna consume her because of man's blood, that's why, because he shed man's blood. You know, and he didn't regard no widows, he didn't regard no old people, you know? As it says in the scriptures, "And for the violence of the land and of the city and of all that dwell therein." So it's not only the man's blood, but it's everything, even the trees, even the animals, everything. They brought out a balance, they raped, robbed, they murdered, everything, you know? The resources that are in that land. So this is Habakkuk 2, verse 12. Woe to them that builded a town with blood and established a city by iniquity. And that's what these people are doing, man. These people are searching out iniquities, they're searching out sins, how they... They search out iniquities upon their bed, man. Let's go to that. And Micah. Micah 2 and 1. This is Micah 2, verse 1. Woe to them that defies iniquity and work evil upon their beds when the morning is light, and they practice it because it is in the power of their hand. So Habakkuk 2 and 1 says, "Woe to them that defies iniquity." So destruction unto them that come up with this iniquity. And what is iniquity? Sin upon sin. So they want to search out how people, just like there's this article that I just read about a man having a pig's heart, you know? On one hand, he's trying to help you, you know? But on the other hand, he's helping you with the most filthiest and the most defiled animal in the planet, you know, on the earth. And if that man is supposed to die, he's supposed to die. You know, that's the will of the Most High, so just let it be. But no, he wants to act like he is God and give him a heart and give him a pig's heart at that. You see? So now that man is a beacon of abomination walking around. When the morning is light, they practice it because it is in the power of their hand. So when it's daytime, that's when they're gonna implement these things. You know, they meditate upon it at night and when it's daytime, then they are gonna practice it just like the scripture says. So woe to these people, man. But to go back to the Psalms. Psalms 10, verse 2. The wicked in his pride doth persecute the poor. Let them be taken in the devices that they have imagined. Let's get the scripture. The Most High is not mocked. So whatever a man reaped, that is what he sows. This is Galatians 6, verse 7. Being not deceived, Yahweh BaShem Yahushai is not mocked. For whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap. And that's what's meant in the scripture. Matthew 2, it's like, yeah, Matthew, Psalms 10, verse 2. The wicked in his pride does persecute the poor. Let them be taken in the devices that they have imagined. So a prophet, you know, he knows how the Most High operates and he is waiting for that time that the wicked is gonna be taken in his own device because he knows that Yahweh BaShem Yahushai works in the manner that we just read, like Galatians 6. You know, if a man soweth wickedness, then in his own wickedness, he's gonna be taken. You see? And the first verse or the first part, "The wicked in his pride does persecute the poor." That's Isaiah, Isaiah 10. You know, how do they persecute us? They persecute us by these laws. As Isaiah 10, verse 1. Woe unto them that decree, unrighteous decrees, and that right grievousness which they have prescribed. You see, so that's how they persecute us, man. They persecute us by law, by manipulating the law, you know? Bear with me for a second. Yeah, this is Psalms 94, verse 20. Shall the throne of iniquity have fellowship with thee? The throne of iniquity represents these wicked, which frame it mischief by law. No, man, so we shouldn't have any ties to these wicked, to the wicked people, you know? Isaias Edom. We have to work, we have to go up and work for them because we're their slaves, you know? In the slave system, in this peace system, but other than that, we shouldn't have any ties with these people. You see? Let me get the Psalms. Psalms 33, verse 10. Yahweh bringing the counsel of the hidden to not. He make it the devices of the people of none effect. You see? So that's how a man of the Most High, a servant of the Most High is gonna be in balance. He's not gonna be moved because he knows that the wicked are gonna be taken in their own devices. This is how the Most High operates. The Most High bringing the counsel of the hidden to not. You see, so it's not gonna succeed, their plans are not gonna succeed. Even if it looks like it's succeeding, it's not gonna fully come to fruition, it's not gonna fully be completed. See? Psalms 10, verse 3. For the wicked boasteth of the boasted of his heart's desire, and blesseth the covetous whom the Most High abhorred. So the wicked, they're prideful, they boast theirself up because of the thoughts that they imagine. And blesseth the covetous whom the Lord abhorred. So just like how the scripture says, folly is said in great dignity, that's the people that they bless. You know, the people that are satanic, the people that are covetous, covetous for these worldly lusts, these worldly material things, you know, like money and fame. So these people, for the wicked boasteth up, it's like, for the wicked boasteth of his heart's desire, which they are prideful, and blesseth the covetous, so they set folly in high dignity, as the scripture says. They bless the people that are puppets, they bless the people that want fame and wanna be as celebrities, you know? Those are the people that they bless, but the Most High, he abhors those people, the Most High hates those people. You know, the Most High hates a prideful look. See? Verse 4. The wicked, through the pride of his conscience. It's like, yeah, the wicked, through the pride of his countenance, will not seek after the Most High, the Most High is not in all his thoughts. No, man. See? So like I was saying, Habakkuk was complaining that righteous judgments weren't proceeding because these people, they don't have the Most High in their mind. They don't act according to what the Bible says. You see? Let's go to that instance. Habakkuk 2, so like Habakkuk 1, verse 1. The burden which Habakkuk, the prophet, did see. And if you go into that word Habakkuk, which is habakwak, which is embrace. So we should actually embrace these things that we're going through, we shouldn't fight it. You know, we know that we went off, you know, as it says in the book of Baruch, and that we have to suffer these things. So, this is Habakkuk 1, verse 1. The burden which Habakkuk, the prophet, did see. O Yahweh, how long shall I cry and thou wilt not hear? Even cry unto thee of violence and thou wilt not save. Why dost thou show me iniquity and cause me to behold grievance? You see? For spoiling and violence are before me and there are that rise up strife and contention. Therefore the law is slack'd and the judgment doth never go forth for the wicked that compass about the righteous. Therefore wrong judgment proceeded. See? So these people, they don't have Yahweh BaShem Yahushai in their thoughts, as we just read in Psalms 10, verse 4. Verse 5. His ways are always grievous, like we just went into. You know, you can put Isaiah 10 and 1, you can put right here. You see? His ways are always grievous. He contends with the Most High. And how does he contend, how does he make it official? He makes it the law, you know? He defies it mischief by law. So that's how his ways are always grievous, they're always grievous unto the poor. Because who are the poor? We are the poor, we are at the bottom of the food chain. Their judgments are far above, out of his sight. As for all his enemies, he profit at them. But this is gonna be a tipping point, man. There's gonna be a turning point where these people, they're gonna look at him, they're gonna be like, okay, enough is enough. Where's the red button? Let me press it, you know? And blow these people to the fuck up. Verse 6. He had said in his heart, "I shall not be moved, for I shall never be an adversary." Let's go to Psalms. Psalms 49, verse 10. And it reads... For he seeth that wise men die, likewise the fool and the brutish person perish and leave their wealth to others. Yeah, that's how this man operates, man. He's a brutish man. What does brutish mean? Stupid, foolish. You see? So, he is a brutish man that thinks that their houses shall continue forever and he's prideful. Psalms 49, verse 10. Their inward thoughts is that their houses shall continue forever and their dwelling places to all generations, they call their lands after their own names. Same thing with Africa, Africa, with America, you know? Skip you Africanas and, what was it? The name eludes me, the name awaits me right now, but those are Roman generals, you know? That they called the land and the continents after. You see? But that's how this man operates, man. You know, he's got old money. If you look at the Bill de Burghs, the Geddys, the Rothschilds, the Oppenheimers, you know? They leave their substance unto their young. You know? So let's go back. Psalms 10, verse 6, verse 7. His mouth is full of cursings, deceit, and fraud. Under his tongue is mischief and vanity. Yep, that's what the scripture says about him, you know? In Revelation. That's one of his blessings, to deceive the people, to deceive the nations. Let me see. Revelations 20. This is Revelations 20, verse 3. And cast him into the bottomless pit, which is, let me see, in the Caucasus Mountains, you know? And shut him up and set a seal upon him that he should deceive the nations no more. So an angel took him and put him in the Caucasus Mountains, you know? So that he would not come out and overtake and deceive these nations anymore because that's what he does, he deceives people, man. But the Most High gives him that. The Most High made him the anointing chair, the Most High is using him. In other words, you know? To deceive these nations and to bring forth the will of the Most High upon earth. You see? That he should deceive the nations no more till the thousand years should be fulfilled and after that, he must be loosed a little season. And we're living in that little season right now because he was shut up a thousand years from 1400 B.C. until 392, 95 B.C. You see? That's when he was shut up, that's when he was that, how you call it? Neanderthal? You know, that he was in the caves and didn't know how to act, that he was all brutish, that he... He was like an animal, man. But then the Most High unleashed him to deceive the nations again. So Psalms 10, verse 8. He sitteth in the lurking places of the villages, in the secret places that he murdered the innocent. His eyes are privily set against the poor. Like we said, Isaiah 10, you know? He comes with these decrees to oppress the poor. And he sits in lurking places of the villages, which you can see that now he has this camera all over the place. Isaias Edom is monitoring everything, you know, he's lurking. He's got cameras everywhere. You see? And that's how he's lurking at the poor. And that's the society that he wants. You know, he's been building this plan up for years, man. See? So that he can sit in his room and observe what people are doing. And he even wants to, like your phone that you have right now. Your phone, you know, he can tap into that and see what you're doing, see what you're up to. You know, your phone is a tracking device and he ultimately wants to put that charagma in you to track you even more. So in the secret places, he sitteth in the lurking places of the villages, in the secret places that he murdered the innocent. Yeah, man. You see? And we all know what happened in that Kingsman movie with these people that had these phones, these SIM cards, and they turned up the frequency and they turned up that vibration. You see? It was all chaos and all murder. But he was safely in his den somewhere, you know, orchestrating all of this. Psalms 10, verse 9. He lied in wait secretly as a lion in his den. He lied in wait to catch the poor. He doth catch the poor when he draweth him into his nest. So he's luring these people, man. He's preparing them, this order of chaos. You know, he's gonna create the chaos like I just spoke about with the Kingsmen. And then the other people are gonna run into his hand. You know, like the scripture just says. He lied in wait to catch the poor. He doth catch the poor when he draweth him into his nest. So he's drawing them in, you know, he's creating chaos so that after that, he can come with a solution like, hey, we can use this and then you're gonna be safe. You see? What do you want? You wanna give up your privacy and get this and you're gonna be protected, you know? Because you can reach us at all times and we can, you know, we're gonna make it easy for you. You can easily reach out to us by just pressing the button or by just a hand gesture or whatnot. You see? Because that's how Isaias Edom operates. So-called, he wants to make things easier for you, you know? So that you won't have any stress and any headaches, but in the meantime, he's setting up snares and traps for you. You see? So he's drawing him into his nest, like it says in Revelations 13, Revelations 13 and 16. He causes all. And if you go into that word, causes, it means to prepare. You know, so he prepares and he draws you in. And that's exactly what he wants you to be. Verse 10. He crouched and humbled himself that the poor may fall by his strong ones. So that's how this man operates. He comes with the Mark Zuckerberg, you know? The guy that, he wears just a t-shirt and some jeans and, you know? Those are the ones that he sends to come with a solution, you know? To come with a propaganda. You see? He crouches and humbled himself, he sends a humble one, so-called. But then afterward, he sends his strong ones because in the background, he's busy with the martial law. You know, he's putting everything, all the bills he's setting out and he's signing it. And if you don't wanna listen, you know, like the, what was that? H R 4x6, 666? You know, that's already, the tracing program is already signed. So they can do it. But if you're not willing to do according to their ways, then they're gonna send their strong ones. And this already happened, this happened in the time of, what's his name? Columbus, you know? He was firstly sending the nice ones, the so-called friendly ones. But then afterwards, when the friendly ones have made contact with the Latinos and Native Americans that were in North America back then, you know, when they made contact and they were all not hostile towards them, that's when Isaias Edom sent the strong ones because they didn't expect them, they didn't have their guard up anymore. You see? So reading on Psalms 10, verse 11. He had said in his heart, "Yahweh had forgotten, he hid at his face, he will never see it." Yeah, man, this man, the pride of this devil, you know, he's like, oh, you know? He's just doing whatever he wants and he's looking at the Most High like, hey, the Most High forgot, the Most High is not seeing me, so I might as well, you know? Go for it. And that's what he has in his heart, that's what he has in his mind. Verse 12. Verse 12. Arise, O Yahweh, O power, lift up thine hand, forget not the humble. Wherefore doth the wicked contend, Yahweh? He had said in his heart, "Thou wilt not require it. Thou hast seen it, for thou beholdest mischief and spite to requit it with thy hand. The poor committed himself unto thee, thou art the helper of the fatherless." You know? So when the government doesn't come up for the fatherless, then the Most High is gonna come up for the fatherless, meaning the child that is without father. You see? As it says in Isaiah 10 and 2. See? So the Most High helps the fatherless if the king doesn't wanna do it. Verse 15. Break thou the arm of the wicked and the evil man, seek out his wickedness till thou find none. The Lord is king forever and ever. The hidden appears out of his land. Yahweh, thou hast heard the desire of the humble. Thou wilt prepare thy heart, thou wilt cause thine ear to hear to judge the fatherless and the oppressed that the man of the earth may no more be oppressed. Yeah, man, so this makes me think about... I think it's Isaiah. Isaiah ten. So like yeah, maybe look for it in my Bible real quick. May read me for a second. Yeah, Isaiah nineteen. So Isaiah nineteen, first nineteen. And it reads. In that day shall there be an altar to the Most High in the midst of the land of Egypt. And the and the pillar at the border thereof to the Most High. So what it says here, in the day shall be, in that day shall there be an altar to the Most High in the midst of the land of Egypt. To that altar, what is that altar? We are, we are that altar. We are those lively stones that make up a table, that make up the temple, you know? Because what do you do on an altar? You you put on sacrifice, right? So with the lively stones, as it says in uh the book of Peters, we are those lively stones that make up the altar. And that make up the rest of this building, you know, which is the temple of the Most High. Which is the house of the Most High, the building of the Most High. So as it says, in that day, which is this day, actually, the end of the the age, the ends of Esau Eden's age. In that day shall there be an altar to the Most High in the midst of the land of Egypt. And we are in spiritual Sodom and Egypt right now, which is America, you know, that's that's speaking about America, but. We are the captive exile that is is, um how do you call it? We are captives in all these countries that we're in, man, where. I am here in Holland, but I'm still a captive, I'm still a slave here in Holland. I'm not free, you know? So Egypt means bondage, Egypt means to be oppressed, Egypt comes from the word. Matissearium, which means to be in straits. And a pillar at the border thereof to the Most High, first twenty. And it shall be a sign and for witness unto the power of hosts, which is Yahweh, in the land of Egypt. For they shall cry unto the Most High because of the oppressors, like we just read in Psalms ten. You know, we are calling out to the Most High because of the oppression, because of the the wickedness of this white man. Like the whole chapter of Psalms ten is speaking about, you know, so we are crying to the Most High, that's why. The it started with, why dost thou not do anything, you know, roughly paraphrasing. In the sight of the wicked, you know, the wicked, they do oppressors, righteous judgment doesn't come, you know? But that's what the Most High wants, he wants us to cry out to him. So for they shall cry unto Yahweh Basham Yehoshai. Because we are, we are giving our body as a living sacrifice, we are crying out, week in and week out, day in and day out. You know, we are making um these 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 lessons, which are actually also prayers to the Most High. You know, when you're reading to the 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 Bible, and when you make these lessons, you know, they're all also prayers. You see? And when we are in the streets, we offer up our body as living sacrifice. We offer up our time, we offer up everything that we have for this ministry, see? And he shall send them a savior, which is Yahweh Shai, and a great one. And there's no greater one than than Yahweh Shai, he's king of kings. And he shall deliver them, his name means he deliverer, he salvation, Yah is he, uh Yahweh Shai is deliverer. So Yahweh Basham Yahweh Shai is hearing us, you know, keep on doing what you're doing. Because this is how the Most High works, he wants us to be oppressed so that we keep on crying to him. Because we can save ourselves, we need Yahweh, Wah, the sending of Yahweh Shai, and the sending of Yahweh Shai. You see? So yeah, man, I hope this video was edifying, it was just a a quick reading of Psalms ten. Wait a second, I started with uh the captive exile. And let me finish on that also. God, so this is Isaiah fifty one, first fourteen, the captive exile hastened that he may be loosed. And that he should not die in the pit, nor that his bread should fail, so. See, full circle, Kalhala Yom La, Yahweh Basham Yahweh Shai, we are calling out because of the oppressor. We are the captive exile that are hastening to be loosed in the pit, in the dungeon, in the captivity captivity that we're in. It doesn't matter where in the world you're in, but you're in the pit, you're in captivity. So it's just full circle, man, this is what the Most High wants and we should embrace it, just like the name Habakkuk means, you see? So Yahweh Atazah, this video is edifying and I wanna say Kalhala Yom La, Yahweh Basham Yahweh Shai, Basham Rikak Kudash, Shalom Akim.